Welcome. Happy New Year, everybody. Thanks for coming back.[3.41][3.41](Laughter).
Thanks for coming back.[5.41][5.41](Laughter).
It's always a good sign.[7.41][7.41](Laughter). So I'd like to open our public hearing and ask our Director of Administration to read aloud the notice, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This public hearing is being held to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed changes to the city zoning bylaw by the number 4246, proposes to split zone a portion of the building located at 1100 Alaska Avenue from C2 Commercial General Zone to C5 Commercial Neighborhood Pub Zone. And there was no responses received.
Thank you. So we had no correspondence or delegations?
No.
So I'll call for a first time for any comments. And for a second time, do we have any comments? Thank you. And for a third time, do we have any comments? Thank you. So I'll call for a motion to close our public hearing. Moved by Counselor McFadden, seconded Counselor Wilbur. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Good morning, Counselor. Welcome. Happy New Year.
How are you?
So we're going to call our meeting to order of our regular meeting of council. And first item of business, item two, new counselor business. Counselor McFadden?
Just a couple of things, your worship. I'd just like to compliment Public Works on the fantastic job they've done on snow removal here over this last little blast we had. And just a quick report, I have information from the B.C. ambulance service that in the year 2014, there was 249 medevac planes in and into Dawson Creek and out. So it certainly speaks to the importance of the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything else, Counselor Wilbur?
Happy New Year to everyone. I just wanted to do a quick update regarding Amanda Waggon and her boys. So they had a fire just before Christmas. And overwhelmingly, I spent a good couple of days in tears of happiness. So I just have a few people I want to thank because without them, it couldn't have happened. So with, in less than 24 hours, Amanda and her boys were placed into a completely furnished home. And the rent and the utilities are being paid for two months. And then they'll prorate the rent afterwards for her so that they can afford to stay there. So I just would like to thank Sterling Management and Western Canadian Properties. Rona actually opened up their doors when they were closed to provide the Christmas tree decorations and got together with Western Canadian Properties to replace all the kids' gifts that they had lost. Urban Systems, Curtis and Kathy York, Christina Ward, Helen and Wayne Easert, Sean Cornwate, and Dave Legassi. The brick in Dawson Creek helped furnish the apartment. And of course, my local colleagues, Jim and Shelley Schute, and Clint and Cheryl Schuman. So thank you. I know there's many, many more, but those are people that came to me. And in less than 24 hours, they were in a nice home. And as one of the boys said, you know, "Yesterday was the worst day of my life, and today's the best." So I'm happy that that was done. And given one of the boys does have a heart condition and they travel a lot to Stollary Hospital, it really set them back on their feet. So thank you to Fort St. John, Dawson Creek, and everybody that in some way helped put that family back in a home for Christmas.
Carry. Thank you, Counselor. Anything further for counselor business? Counselor Rogers?
Yes, regarding bylaw 4250 from the December 15 meeting from Dante Holdings, that was the southwest quarter of section 23 where we defeated the motion to rezone that from RS1 to RM1. I did go up into that neighborhood and I went door-knocking, door-to-door, and asked the people how they would feel about that being changed. And I didn't, with all the people that I've talked to up there, I didn't get one person that said that they would like to see the zoning changed from RS1 to RM1. So I think that we did the right thing there at the last council meeting by leaving the zoning the way it was.
Thank you. Anything further for counselor business? Thank you. Item three, we have 3-1. We have our minutes for our regular meeting of December 15 for adoption. Counselor Schuman, seconded Counselor McFadden. Were there any errors or omissions in the minutes? Have a motion to accept the minutes presented? All in favor? Sorry. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. It's early yet.
It is.
Was there any business arising out of the minutes? Correspondence, item 5.1. We have a letter from Becky Needham of the Dawson Creek Midget Rep Team. Counselor McFadden?
I'm not sure if I should just make it for information or refer it to council. Do you need a motion first, or?
Well, I think first of all, our policy is that we don't, through our grants, we don't give a specific grant to groups for these purposes. But one of the suggestions that I throw out, that I had some conversation with Jim on, was perhaps the, in the past, when they're hosting provincials, we've made the arrangement where they get, they give us advertising in the program to the equivalent amount of what the cost of the ice would be in order to help put the provincial event on in the community.
So the sponsorship thing?
So it would be a sponsorship for, Jim, is that correct?
Through your worship, in the past provincials, the most recent were the Bantam provincials. You have waived fees, but that was before you put in the policy that says that you do not. So if you wish to provide equivalent support, you could do it through a sponsorship. We couldn't give you the number right now because they won't know how many teams they have and hence how much ice they require until, I think, February sometime.
Yeah.
But it will be in the neighborhood of $2,500 or something about like that.
Counselor McFadden?
But at this point, they've just applied. As I understand it, they haven't been given the tournament. Is that correct?
That is correct, your worship. But they need to know whether they will be paying for the ice or not. It will affect whether or not they, or, sorry, they will be paying for the ice because your policy says no waiver.
Yes.
Whether they'll get an equivalent sponsorship is an important part of their bid.
Thank you. Well, I'll make the motion in that we get them the sponsorship to the value of the ice rental in lieu of sponsor, advertising and their brochures.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Thank you. We have a letter from Mr. Brad Woodside, President of the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, in regards to the FCM membership renewal. Counselor Schuman?
I move that we renew our membership with FCM.
Thank you. Seconded. Counselor Wilbur, discussion? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, perhaps staff could list the benefits of this membership to this city.
Through your worship, those benefits are political. So I think it will be more appropriate for the mayor or a counselor to list the benefits of the.
Comment? So certainly, the memberships that we have with both the North Central Local Government Association, the Union of B.C. Municipalities, and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities give us the opportunity to be part of, in my view, a larger organization for that lobbying or input into provincial or federal programs or initiatives. And honestly, I've been in the chair for a year, so I haven't had, I didn't go, I haven't attended the FCM, so I can't speak to the value of that in terms of what it provides to us. But certainly, the value in terms of us getting to provincial, both our MLAs, the Cabinet Ministers that I've seen, and/or industry with respect to the North Central Local Government Association and the Union of B.C. Municipalities, I think has that value for us as a community and as a city. Now, we have Counselor Wilbur and Counselor Schuman, who sit on the board of both the North Central Local Government Association and the Union of B.C. Municipalities, that give us that representation both regionally and provincially and as a city and as a council. Maybe I could ask them to speak to their views on that, regional as well as provincial.
Well, I think it's one of those situations that you're either not at the table or you are at the table. And we want to have our voice at the table. So there does come things up that affect us federally, and we need to be sitting at that table. So for our membership, I think our policy is that every year, a mayor and one counselor goes. I know we waived that for Vancouver, but, so, I mean, realistically, we do keep our expenses as low as possible on that, but I think we need to be at that table. I think it's important that we're represented, and I think it's important that we have a voice. It's not just us representing ourselves, but we're representing our community and our region. And I just, for me, I think it's utterly important to be, have a voice at that table.
Thank you.
And as far as FCM, it's important that we're, we have that voice. I think there are some programs that they do administer on our behalf. I'm not sure exactly what they are, but Jim knows. And whereas we haven't gone, I think that you will go and you will see a benefit to us belonging to this.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Membership in the, in NCGLA and UBCM are not linked to the FCM. They're independent, so.
It's a federal.
Yes, a federal thing, so. I, so I'm just, I'm not rebutting what you said in a sense, but I think the attendance at UBCM or NCGLA is not, for your credit, that we'd be a member of FCM.
Sure. Counselor Javecov?
Are there any tangible benefits that we've seen in the past, like say, in the last 10 or 15 years?
So I honestly couldn't answer that, having been in this chair for a year, and I didn't attend the FCM, and I haven't had that input or impact.
Maybe, maybe Jim Schute has been here that long. Maybe he's aware of any, any benefits that we've received through the FCM.
Well, your worship, the major accomplishments that the FCM trumpets in this letter and in their other conversations are the Build Canada Fund and the Gas Tax Fund. Gas Tax Fund is administered by FCM, and FCM unquestionably played a role in convincing the federal government to do that piece of work. The Build Canada Fund, the relationship, the lobbying relationship in B.C. is between the UBCM, representing municipalities, and the provincial government. On a federal level, the lobbying relationship is between the FCM, representing municipalities, and the federal government. So to the extent that there are federal programs that benefit municipalities, the FCM would suggest they've had a key role in that.
Okay. Counselor Javecov?
How have they benefited?
Well, for instance, we receive how much in gas tax?
Approximately $500,000 a year.
Approximately $500,000 a year in gas tax, for instance, at Dawson Creek.
Thank you. Any further questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Thank you. 5-3, we have a letter from Mr. David Campy, In-Line Contracting, regarding the Residential Development Committee. And this was a letter as a follow-up to our last meeting. Counselor Parslow?
I move that we receive this for information.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman, seconded. Discussion? Oh, no, it's not discussion. All in favor? Boo? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
I'd just like to say I really appreciated this letter, some of the sentiments expressed in it, drawing attention to us, some of the, some of the issues and the call for a level playing field, which is important in my mind.
Thank you.
So I appreciate you doing this.
Counselor Roger?
Yes, in Mr. Campy's letter, he, he did show, indicate some concern about the water retention ponds and et cetera. And I was just a little concerned myself that, that the retention pond for Western Development Properties has not been built yet. They have their temporary pond in place. And I was, from any indication, when I've talked to them, they say that they can't reach a deal with Trent Lindberg, who actually owns that land down below. I've suggested to them a couple of times that maybe that they should try calling Trent. And to this date, I don't think that they have tried contacting him further. It's just, it's starting to, it's becoming a concern for me that they are going to be pushing that onto the city. And I just wondered if there was anything that we could do to make that process happen so that we can actually see a plan when they have a date to do that, because that will affect Mr. Campy's land to the north of that development.
Yeah, I think it'll be, to me, the correspondence, the issues will be dealt with and will have to deal with as part of 4204 that's coming up, as well as our public hearing process as a component of our residential development. And this will be one discussion because it's, for me, it's part of that CD1, CD2 that we've included in it, so.
Counselor Parslow?
Yes, Counselor Rogers' comments made me go to my die. I wrote a few points here. I just want some information, I guess. And so I guess this question is to staff. When this whole area was, the whole CD1, CD, CD2, sorry, which is this area, and the rest of the plan was developed, what were the understandings about who would be responsible for the development of the retention areas? To, to, Jim?
Through your worship, the, when those lines were proposed for development in the South Peace Community Development Plan, a big issue identified was that when you converted them from what they are largely still today, which is fields that will absorb water, to built out with impermeable rooftops and concrete driveways, that handling stormwater was going to be an issue. Because the storm line to which that stormwater would be directed, which runs down 90th and ultimately down to behind Tubby's Trailer Park, that line was not sufficient to handle the runoff. So the developers who were at the table, and the neighborhood plan was developed by the property owners at the time, or in conjunction with the property owners at the time, they looked at it and said, you know, "That will be horrendously expensive to tear up all that pavement, upsize those pipes." A cheaper option would be onsite catchment with a catchment pond that would be operate like your bathtub. When it got to a certain level, it would overflow into the storm system, but in a controlled fashion. So that was a choice they made as cheaper than upgrading the storm line. And it's a joint responsibility of all of them. The reality of the thing is, the first person to develop, the first of what was four owners is now three owners. The first to develop are the people who must bear that cost and then recover it from the others. So that's Western Properties. They are balking at, at undertaking that cost. They would prefer you undertake that cost. They brought that to you, you refused them. You said, "No." The deal is, you will build that and recover it from, subsequently recover it from the other developers like Mr. Campy when he is ready to go. In less than, until council changes their mind, that's the answer to them. They are within a handful of development permits or buildings from reaching the capacity of their temporary ponds. So they can't build out any further without doing that. I see no sign that they are, as Counselor Rogers say, says, "I see no sign that they are progressing on building the catchment pond." So I expect that they intend to come back to you again. And at some point, they will either have to stop developing, or they will have to build a catchment pond, or you will take over building the catchment pond. Those are sort of the options.
Thank you. So we're, Counselor Javecov?
Building the catchment pond, I guess, is one of the issues, but if the land is held privately, what provisions are there to control the cost of purchasing that land? Like, I mean, I guess in the worst-case scenario, somebody could ask $10 million and throw the whole cost structure out of whack. Like, is there any provisions for that? Or, or was it just sort of left open?
Jim?
Again, through your worship, it was left to the property owners to work that out. But you became concerned as a council about that, because the one property owner, Mr. Lindberg, whose land is the physical location where the catchment pond needs, needs to be, you were told by Western Properties that he was asking an exorbitant amount that was far outside the range of market. So you took that in hand. You authorized a, an assessment, well, appraisal of the land. That appraisal came back to you, and the appraised value of the land was pretty much what Trent had asked for. And so you, you looked at that and said, "There's no need for us to intervene." You had looked at, what you had directed staff was, if it is true that the landowner is asking for something way above market value, then perhaps an expropriation would occur. But when it came back, and this is relatively recently, you got this several months ago, it came back and said, "No," that the, the landowner is asking for something very close to market value, and there's no need for you to intervene.
Thank you.
So we're, we have, we don't, we don't really have an agenda item for this, so we've kind of let it progress a bit. But it really is part of the zoning amendment bylaw that we're going to be dealing with, deals with, in my view, the CD1, CD2 as a component to that under the development that we're dealing with. We're going to deal with that following the agenda here, and we'll have some further discussion if council wishes at that time.
We're a little ahead of our 9:00 AM agenda for delegation, so I'd like to go to, and I'm going to skip reports because we've got a fairly significant one there, so I'm going to go to 8-1, our local area service parcel tax amendment bylaw for consideration of Counselor Wilbur? Counselor McFadden? Seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Item 8.2 is the Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw, number 4249. Counselor Parslow, Counselor Schuman, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Thank you. 8.3 is our Parkland Reserve Fund bylaw, number 4248. Counselor Schuman? Counselor Wilbur, seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 8-4 is the Gas Franchise Bylaw, number 4252, for consideration of adoption. Counselor Parslow, seconded. Counselor Rogers, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. 8-5 is the Smoking Regulation bylaw, number 4240, for consideration of adoption. Counselor Schuman, seconded. Counselor Wilbur. Everybody keeping up? Counselor Javecov?
Just a question. This bylaw basically prevents anybody from smoking on any land that's controlled by the city?
So through to administration, maybe can I get some clarification for?
Sure. Yeah, the smoking is only prohibited within 7.5 meters of the city's walking trail and in the playgrounds and the sports fields.
So on the walking trail, a person would have to go 7.5 meters into the grass away from the walking trail?
Exactly. Yep.
Further discussion? Further questions? Counselor Parslow?
I've been tracking political things on this matter this last month or so. It's interesting that the province of Ontario is, is basically setting the standard that we're in the aspirations of the Canadian Cancer Society and several municipalities have also included e-cigarettes in this. So be interesting, as this evolves, you may find that provincial, this provincial government will catch up with the Ontario provincial government and make this unnecessary.
Yeah, it was actually, you know, it's another note I was encountering last fall, and I was going into a building there, and all of their buildings in the downtown core were posted eight meters from the entrances for smoke. So it was kind of a, just caught my eye when we were dealing with the smoking regulation bylaw here, that that's already in place in some of the cities and communities. Counselor Javecov?
So that would basically apply to all of the sidewalks in the downtown area?
Yeah.
But no other sidewalks? Like a sidewalk on 95th, for example, would be fair game to smoke while you're walking on the sidewalk.
Correct. And we should mention, of course, that Rotary Lake is specifically included as no smoking?
Part of that conversation we went through was with the kids, children in the public areas like the parks, Rotary Lake, and some of those areas for restricting the smoking around the kids.
Further discussion? Counselor Parslow?
As one of my dear school trustees used to say, "I have a curious question." So Counselor Javecov just stated that it would be okay to smoke on 95th Avenue, but not in the downtown. Is, to staff, is that a correct assertion?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, you're smoking near the, your restriction is to the entrances to the buildings. So it's not the fact it's on the sidewalk, it's on the entrances to the building.
It's because there's zero property lines set back there in the downtown area?
Yeah. So it's not the sidewalk, but the entrances to the building.
Yeah, I got you.
Further questions? Counselor Javecov?
Has there been any consideration on enforcement then for downtown? Because, I mean, people are smoking there all the time. I think it's going to be a major change.
By complaint, right? It's by complaint driven.
So.
Somebody complains.
If we see somebody smoking, we phone 311?
Yep.
If it's bothering you.
Further questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Do you want that recorded?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Javecov? So we're close enough to nine o'clock. I'd like to go back to our delegations. And 6.1, our first delegation this morning, is Mr. Ken Watson, the director, and I believe Anne McCabe, the Vice President of B.C. Crime Stoppers Society, are in attendance regarding the proclamation of January as Crime Stoppers Month.
You're on, guys. Good morning. Ken?
So it's my pleasure to read the proclamation this morning. Whereas anonymous tips are being handled by One Crime Stoppers Society, part of the whole northeast corner of B.C., and whereas society accepts anonymous tips via phone, through the web, or by text messages, commits to keeping confidentiality for individuals and partners with the media and police as part of a provincial, national, and international organization to help make communities a safer place to live. And whereas Northeast B.C. Crime Stoppers is now, is part of a new initiative by Global B.C.'s News Channel, which is focused on airing information about unsolved crimes or incidents in the hopes of generating new information. And whereas, on behalf of the citizens of Northeast B.C., who wish to live in a safe community and who wish to acknowledge that Crime Stoppers has been operating in this area since 1989, now therefore I hereby proclaim the month of January 2015 as Crime Stoppers Week in Dawson Creek. Should that be Crime Stoppers Month?
They'll take the whole month. We'll take the month.
Thank you. And so, Lord.
So on behalf of the citizens of the communities of Northeast B.C., who wish to live in a safe community, we seek your support in declaring January 2015 to be Crime Stoppers Month. In 2014, we locally celebrated Crime Stoppers in June as it coincided with our 15th annual golf fundraising tournament, which was also our 25th year in operation. We're moving back to January to celebrate with all of the other Crime Stoppers communities. The Northeast B.C. Crime Stoppers program has been actively involved in the area since 1989, as you mentioned, and programs were started up in Fort St. John and Dawson Creek. Presently, Northeast B.C. Crime Stoppers services all the communities in the northeast corner of B.C. We're part of an international community that sees programs around the world, serving more than 1,000 communities. All the communities of the northeast operate using an internet-based program called TIPS-O. This system allows us to cross-reference files and search the database for crimes that may be linked or common to the number of communities. Our phone answering is handled by a company called Alternative Answers, based in Ontario, that looks after many other programs. that looks after many other programs across North America. This allows for total integrity and anonymity for all citizens who wish to contact Crime Stoppers with information. Tipsoft is also available to handle web tips or text tips, again, through a system that allows anonymity. We're in the midst of rebuilding our board as some long-term members have decided to move on to other challenges and pursuits in their personal lives. During the past year, we have striven to increase our advertising and rebound to our website with a local area provider. Thank you for your support over the past 25 years and we hope to see that continue. I would just like to also quickly mention, just on some statistics, that since our inception of the Tipsoft, we have taken in 298 tips, we have followed up 158, there have been 11 arrests, 12 cases cleared, and two fugitives arrested. 13 charges have been laid and we have given out eight rewards. Again, we may offer the reward, but people may choose to not take it. So that's pretty nice numbers.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you for your efforts, certainly, and the long-term benefits to our community as we obviously, you guys are committed to, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next delegation is Bob Busby, Jennifer Neese, and Al Cameron from the Dawson Creek Literacy Society, in attendance regarding City Space for Downtown Multicultural Day.
Good morning and welcome. Happy New Year.
Same to you. Okay. Again, my name's Bob Busby. This is Jennifer Neese. We are here from the Dawson Creek Literacy Society. Thank you for having us. The reason we asked to come today was in regards to our event that we're planning to celebrate Canadian multiculturalism on June 27. Good news is, we put in a request for this event to have a road closure to celebrate the event in downtown Dawson Creek. We received news mid-last week that that request has been approved. So essentially, what will be happening is along 102nd Avenue between 9th Street and 11th Street, and on 102nd Avenue and 10th Street, south to 104th Avenue, I believe, the road will be closed and welcoming people to celebrate Canadian multiculturalism Day. Just a bit of background on the event. On November 13th in 2002, the current, or the governor general of the time, Adrian Clarkson, designated June 27th of each year as Canadian multiculturalism Day. It's an opportunity to celebrate our diversity and our commitment to democracy, equality, and mutual respect, and to appreciate the contributions of the various multicultural groups and communities to Canadian society. This event will feature three zones, as I mentioned. They'll have an event for family-friendly games and events, one for food, and one for live music and cultural events. This event coincides with Celebrate Canada Week, that celebrates Aboriginal Day, St. John Baptist Day, Canadian multiculturalism Day, and Canada Day. We have applied for federal funding to cover the cost of running this event, and we're here today as kind of a first step to promote the event and also to follow up with the road closure event request, and also just a heads up, in the next few coming days, we will be putting in another request to have the portable hand washing stations and the refillable drinking stations that the city has.
Thank you.
So, is there questions? Counselor Schuman?
I don't have a question, but it sounds like a really great event. I know several years back, we had something similar and it wasn't planned out this long in advance, and it was still a fabulous event, so kudos to you guys for getting an early start on it. And I think it'll be amazing. We have all amazing multiculturalism happening in the northeast of B.C. in Dawson Creek, and I'm excited to, you know, get down there and see their, well, taste their food and see the entertainment. So I'm excited about this. I think that it'll be a great event in our downtown core.
Thank you.
Further comments? Counselor Wilbur?
Well, just on top of what Counselor Schuman said, I just want to say thank you, guys, because you have now officially hit something for every season in the community for our families to do, so thank you for doing that, because I know you guys put in a lot of work and with our Easter extravaganza and the Halloween event and all the things they do, so thank you, because you've covered off every season, so there's something for us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Further questions? So, thank you. We'll bring it back under Mayor's business and reconfirm some of the aspects to it. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 6.3, we have Mr. Dan Buckner, Vice President, and Lori Edward, Program Manager, from the Peter Lawhey Leadership Institute at the BAM Center, who are in attendance today, who are not in attendance today, but sent their regrets.
They were under the impression that we were on B.C. time, so they will be arriving at 9:45.
Okay, so we'll see them when they get here. Thank you.
Surprise!
If everyone else would just join us.
Yeah. So next up, we have item 6.4, we have Mr. Dale Campbell, Mr. Tim Shields, Mr. Al Mottashaw from the Rotary Clubs of Dawson Creek, in attendance regarding our Rotary 2015 District Conference. Good morning. Good morning. Happy New Year.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of you folks on your election into our council, and again, I feel very satisfied that our city's going to be ran in a good way. The Rotary International has districts throughout the world, and we are part of District 5370. Every year, there's a new Rotarian elected to be a district governor, and for 15, starting July 2015, Tim Shields from Rotary Club of Dawson Creek Sunrise will be the...
I missed the meeting.
District Governor.
That'll teach ya.
And as such, we're hosting a district conference in Dawson Creek. Al Mottashaw is the sponsorship chair, and Maxine and myself are the co-chairs of the conference committee. Our theme is "What If?" And I'd like to, can you play that little bit of a video? That will help explain a little bit more about our theme.
What if? Glad someone else missed that. ... powerful impact on our lives and the lives of others. What if? Let's try again. What if? Two simple words. When placed at the beginning of a sentence, they can have a profound and powerful impact on our lives and the lives of others. What if? Leads us to ask questions, seek answers, solve mysteries, and in turn, to invent, to make medical discoveries. What if? Sometimes leads us to reflect on decisions made, actions taken. What if? Leads us to challenge ourselves and to push boundaries. What if? Leads us to be, as Mahatma Gandhi said, "The change you wish to see in the world." So are you ready to ask the question? What if? Join us at the Rotary District 5370 Conference from October 1st to 4th, 2015, at the Encana Events Centre in Dawson Creek, and spend an evening with a Canadian hero and icon, a test pilot, fighter pilot, renowned author, and university professor, and sometimes space musician, the former commander of the International Space Station, Colonel Chris Hadfield. Be enlightened and challenged by the work of journalist, documentary filmmaker, award-winning author, and human rights activist Sally Armstrong. Be inspired and entertained by professional motivational speaker, musician, and author Alvin Law. Be prepared to ask questions, seek answers, reflect on the past, and look to the future to challenge yourself and push boundaries because what if you had an idea that could change the world? Rotary, together we can change the world.
There's one more minute.
Just one more minute, Jim.
Hi, I'm Chris Hadfield, former commander of the International Space Station, Canadian astronaut, and I'll be joining with folks at the Rotary Club of Dawson Creek for the conference, and the theme of the conference is "What If?" It's a good question to ask yourself. I ask myself that on a regular basis. What if you could change the world? What if you could just change yourself? What if you could change things in your hometown? What if? What if you missed the conference? It's going to be a great opportunity to challenge ourselves, to think about things, to talk about opportunities, probably a good chance to laugh, and maybe a chance to be inspired by some of the ideas as well. So don't let the answer to "What if?" be "What if I missed it?" See you later.
What if?
They start over.
Good job, guys.
... powerful impact on our lives and the lives of others.
It's going to be awesome.
What if? Leads us to ask questions, seek answers.
What if you're not a Rotary member?
You can still register.
What if?
We are here today to invite you to participate.
Yeah, I saw that. There's only one gets to go and it's going to be him, you know it.
No, that is not the correct... I'm sorry. But this is probably the first district conference in the 15 years I've been a Rotarian that's going to actively pursue public participation.
Nice.
We want as many of the public to come as possible, and we're going to have different ways for them to participate. They can be part of the whole conference, they can come to just different segments of the conference. One of the things that we're doing at this conference is helping Stop Hunger Now fill up a bunch of food bags, and we're hoping to have the whole council participate in that, and also different service clubs to participate in that during segments of our conference. We're expecting over 600 people, right around 600 people, well over 300 rooms, we hope we'll have that many.
What if?
You've got spare room at your house?
What if?
Overall, there'll be, you know, $500,000 to $600,000 spent in this community because of this conference. Our own cost at the event center is anywhere from $120,000 to $150,000 is what we're anticipating for catering and the rental of that. We really, really want to promote Dawson Creek and Rotary. This community has been so supportive of Rotary in the past 50, 60 years, and we want to show the public a little bit more of what Rotary is about and gain their confidence and maybe some more participation. So I'll leave it with you folks then with the question, "What if you could help us out?" And I'm sure you could help us out with a reduction maybe in our food costs or something like that, where there's no cash outlay directly or a check, it doesn't matter. But we want you all as individuals to come also. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just want to speak a little bit to the meal packaging. We are going to have meal packaging events throughout the conference, but on Sunday, we're inviting the entire community of Dawson Creek to come down and fill, well, as Dale said, their bags. It's a combination of rice, soy, lentils, dried lentils, and then a vitamin pack that we will, we're not sure where they're going right now, but generally what happens is they go to schools for school feeding programs in developing nations, and it's a way to get the kids to school. It's basically what it amounts to, because families will keep their children at home to work in the fields, but if they're going to get a meal, they'll send them to school, they get educated, it helps them get out of poverty. And we're hoping, we're planning, we're not hoping, we're planning to do a truckload over the course of the weekend. A truckload is 285,000 meals, is what we will do over the course of that weekend. One person in a two-hour shift can do about 300 meals. So we're going to look for a few shifts of 300 people. We would like to encourage the entire council to be there and bring the city staff to fill a shift. That's what I've got about the meal packaging. The conference itself is going to be incredible. We are already far ahead of what the last couple of years have done for registrations. We had an early bird cutoff December 31st. We are at 223 registrations as of now. Counselor Schuman, there are a couple local Dawson Creek residents that are not in Rotary yet that have registered. And we, I actually, we even got somebody from Kelowna, Ogo Pogo, which I don't know how they heard about the conference, but they're coming up. So to give you some perspective on that number of 223, last year at this time, the district conference that was held in Edmonton had six registrations, and as of September 18th, they had 330. They ended up with about 400. So I think the 500 to 600 number is definitely attainable. We're probably going to end up in the situation that we won't have enough room for how many want to come. Exotic location.
They are.
We are promoting it that way.
Thank you. So, any questions? Counselor Parslow?
Dale taught my attention with his projected costs for the use of the Encana Events Centre, or was it the use or was, what, can you sort of unpack that statement of yours?
Catering is approximately $200 a head.
Oh, I get it.
Okay. So there's a ballpark figure, plus facility rentals and any other RV or AV, pardon me, that we're using, that they're supplying, so that's, there you go.
Further questions?
So obviously, when I saw the announcement and Dale come to see me a month or so ago, two months ago maybe, and gave a heads up on how exciting for the community to be able to have this caliber of conference take place in our community, obviously, it doesn't happen in a community unless somebody steps up and is willing to take on the role of the district governor. And so, Tim, congratulations, first of all, and it's a credit and an honor to have you as district governor. Rotary, and you guys said it, Rotary has been an iconic service club within this community for I don't know how many years, and you think back to the people and the membership that, and the work that has been done in our community as a result of the Rotary Club. I just think it's just an amazing event for us to be able to showcase our community, and obviously, the Rotary Clubs, the Noon Club and the Sunrise Club, we, we're going to do what we can to ensure we support it in every way possible, and so I felt it was important for these guys to come this morning to give us an update on it and make sure that we get the information. There was a sponsorship package that's been around it, so we'll bring it back under Mayor's business.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Posing our sponsorship share, I'd like to present you with a T-shirt, please. They don't stand out, you hide in the crowd with them.
Nobody knew we were at this year's conference.
What if Dale was touching you, Lauren, because wearing the orange all the time?
Wearing my speed skating events.
Can we have a picture?
What if?
What if?
What if?
Thank you very much for your attention and your...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it's blurry. Well, that one's not. Our mayor and... Well, that sounds pretty...
Item 6.5, we have Samantha and April Moye from Tourism Dawson Creek, regarding the Dawson Creek Tourism Update. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome. Happy New Year.
Thank you. You too. So first, we wanna say thanks so much for having us and congratulations to Mayor and Council on a new term. It's our first time presenting to the new council, so thank you for having us, of course. So I apologize first off for us being a bit delayed recording to you. In the last four months, I've been doing a lot of traveling, especially with all these Destination B.C. changes. So I thought, why not wait till New Year, when everyone's fresh, and start again for the 2015 year? So I'm gonna start just with the 2014 numbers of the Visitor Center in Alaska Highway House, and then I'll talk about priorities for the upcoming quarter. So Visitor Center this year, incredible year. We saw increase of 29.3% in the number of visitors staying in Dawson Creek. Now, there's two reasons that number is so high. One is that Destination B.C. allowed us to capture statistics when we're speaking with people outside of Visitor Center. So previously, we weren't allowed to sort of count those numbers. They are allowing us now to do that. So for us, we've attended many of our community events. And when we spoke to people who are asking about accommodations, activities, gas stations, grocery stores, any of those questions, we were allowed to take those statistics and report on them. So 29% looks huge, but it was an accurate number in the sense of we got to help these people in our community. As well, Alaska Highway House was up 5.9%, which is great for us. We're finally seeing some returns on different types of advertising. Before, the advertising was very much coming from our dollars. It was trying to be everything for everyone. And now, we're shifting to very specific advertising for the unique things that we have in our community. And we are seeing those returns through Alaska Highway House because it is one of those things where if I'm advertising as Tourism Dawson Creek, people don't understand why I'm only advertising for Alaska Highway House. So we're making those delineations so customers understand that community is one thing, and the community has certain attractive in businesses themselves. Also, for Alaska Highway House, we're looking at sort of doing some investing, not a lot of money, but just changing how we're using technology in Alaska Highway House. We're looking at getting some iPads to do like digital guestbooks. And then that way, we can post them on our website, talk about them on social media. So just a new way of doing it. Travel trade. So I took away the graphs this year just because I didn't have as much time and detail to do it as I was traveling in December. But the numbers are down for motor coach, and that trend's been happening for about three years, as we've talked about before. We are reducing our investment into this market in the sense that no supply, because the baby boomers are changing the way they travel. They wanna be semi-independent. And that's why we're seeing increases in the caravan traveler. These are the people that have their RVs, trailers, campers. They buy a package, they arrive in Dawson Creek, they start to travel to Alaska. But they're also independent once they start in the community. So they get to have a package that's planned, but they also have to do their own thing once they're stopped. So we're focusing more on the caravan side now because those people spend a lot of money once they're in the community. They wanna experience the communities that they're stopping in. And in Dawson Creek, since we're mile zero, these caravan companies actually start in Dawson Creek. And last summer, we had about a third of them start in Dawson Creek, and their average day was seven days. So some caravans only stay one night along the highway. But we have the opportunity to start the caravans here. The attendees, as you could say, or the visitors are staying longer and spending more in our community, so it's worth the money that we're investing. So my last sort of section was priorities for the upcoming quarter. It's been a crazy year with different timelines changing. Brent and I worked on the Community Guide and Visitor Guide last year. We changed sort of the delivery date, so we had it earlier in our community. So right now, we're selling advertising, and our content's gonna work on in January. So it's a big thank you to city staff for helping us on the community magazine side. We wanna make sure that our information's accurate, and that we have some great pictures in it that are relevant to our community. So city staff helps us a lot with that. CTO, so Community Tourism Opportunities. This is a program that Destination B.C., previously Tourism B.C., sort of allocates to the regions, and we've applied for this project for years. And this year, we're working on our Historic Walking Tour. And that's the program we've had for many years here that is a pamphlet that the travelers use to experience downtown. We're looking at adding a couple more kiosks, so those panels are on the side of the buildings, and getting newer, not newer, but old stories into a new way of telling it. So we've incorporated QR tags, which is you scan it with your smartphone, and any contact can pop up. And for us, we had Simon Zs many years ago come up and do some videos and audio. And so the traveler sort of gets another way to hear the story, so either video or audio or in person, by reading the pamphlet. 2015 Canada Winter Games are next month. How is that here? I can't believe it. But Northern B.C. Tourism is actually doing a Games Time activation. So tourism communities of the North are able to attend. And it's almost like a trade show. We get to have a little booth in the Games Village and promote our community. I will be attending for Tourism Dawson Creek. I will be there for three days. I don't know what three days we're going yet, but I can update the community when we're going because I would like to bring some community members with me so that we sort of have this entourage of Dawson Creek attending. So Mayor and Council, if you have time to attend, you're more than welcome to come with me, and we can be the cheering committee for Dawson Creek. And then for me, April will talk about it as well, just working with Northern B.C. Tourism in these times of change. You know, it's something of uncertainty. We wanna make sure that we're not lost as Dawson Creek and we're not lost as the North. So that's it for me, but I know April has a couple of her stuff.
Thanks, Samantha. Good morning. I always like to close with noting Tourism Dawson Creek's representation and involvement, not only at a Northern B.C. region level, but also at provincial level. And Samantha continues to participate, play an active role in the communities that are funded. Some of them are funded by the additional 2% hotel tax. But Tourism Dawson Creek is represented at that table. Also, Tourism Dawson Creek's very much involved in supporting the Alaska Highway Heritage Project. And a good piece of news with that is that the draft concept paper was submitted to Historic Sites and Monuments Board for that particular project, so we're expecting that review to come back. And also, certainly Samantha and Tourism Dawson Creek's are involved in supporting the Tumler Ridge Geopark project. So we have many exciting activities, projects that are moving forward. So it's really critical that we have the support and the involvement of Tourism Dawson Creek in all of those. Samantha's alluded to changes on the tourism front. There is a new corporate strategy with tourism for Destination B.C. And once again, Samantha did a very good job of organizing the Destination B.C. forum session that took place in early December, at which the CEO presented, and we appreciated the representation from councilors who attended. So there are proposed changes on the horizon. Some of those include centralizing the marketing activities down in Vancouver. There would be, there's a proposed change of rule for the tourism regions. There's the destination marketing organizations. There's six DMOs, we refer to them as, in the province. Then they represent certain geographic regions with unique assets. Destination B.C. has changed funding, reduced funding, or eliminated funding for Vancouver Coast and Mountains. Their reasoning is because there's many different city DMOs that have existing funding, so they didn't feel that it was relevant for an overarching region. But that did have serious implications for smaller communities such as Pemberton, the other little communities located in the Fraser Canyon. So we really don't know what that looks like for those communities. Again, we do know that there will be changes in the works for Northern B.C.'s role. The concern that Northern B.C. is expressing is that although these changes are intended to increase the pot, the money, for marketing, the concern is that we want to ensure that there is allocated dedicated funds for northern communities so that when there are choices to be made, and some time not as timely as should be because not every community has a destination marketing organization, we want to make sure that the communities do still have access to this greater pot of funds. So I think what's taking place now is that Destination B.C. is digesting the comments and the input received from various stakeholders during the meetings that they held throughout the province. And I imagine they're also saying that perhaps not each... It might not be a one-size-fits-all solution, but we do feel that there might be some serious changes. So again, kudos to Samantha and Tourism Dawson Creek for making sure that we had a really good representation from our area. And the weather was miserable, the traveling was horrible. It was really a poor time of the year, but we did have a good turnout. So we're certainly open to any more questions, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Schuman?
Hi, guys. Thanks for that. Samantha, you were talking about this seven-day stay with these caravans. Is it because they muster here that they're staying? So they might arrive, you know, several days earlier than the guide?
The tour starts, yeah. So the other thing, we, you know, we chat with our travelers. So we visited them at their campground, and we just asked them, you know, "Why are you here seven days?" You know, to me, that's a bit early. And for them, is that, you know, they're full-time snowbirds. So for them, they've been traveling around, they could be still in the States, they could be in Canada, and they want some time to get their groceries, fill the tank, you know, maybe fix a tire, fix the windshield. They're sort of using us as that spot to go, "Okay, let's do seven days before we get back into this package" and just sort of restock up, I guess.
And so they're staying like at the Mile Zero Park and...
Yep, so our three RV parks. With these caravan travelers, they like to be in private campgrounds. They don't do provincials, so they are paying for extra services. The average per-night rate that they are used to is about $50. So they do spend when they're out there. Yeah.
Councilor McFadden?
Thank you, you worship... I attended the Destination B.C. rollout they had here, and I do have some concerns about what may or may not be coming down the future. It sounds to me like there'd be somebody in Victoria or Vancouver deciding for us what's the best marketing for tourism for us in our area. And I do have some concerns about that, but we'll see how it unfolds. You said they had cut funding to the Coast Mountain region. Would that include Whistler?
Yes, it does. Well, the regional association. So Whistler actually has its own revenue through the additional 2% hotel tax. So it's to the regional destination marketing organization, which was Vancouver Coast and Mountains. The bodies, the bodies such as Vancouver, Whistler, Abbotsford, Langley, all of those major communities, that doesn't necessarily implicate their funding model. But overarching management and input of marketing would change because of the elimination of...
Well, I think it's something we have to be, keep our eye on because I don't feel great, I don't feel a lot of comfort in what may be or may not be coming down the pike here in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilor Rogers?
Yeah, I was also at the Galvin Creek. And with Destination B.C., to tell you frankly, I wasn't impressed with their presentation. The pictures that they had showed everybody, I didn't see anything that represented Northern British Columbia. I also talked to the lady that was putting it on, and she thought that Prince George was Northern British Columbia. And I informed her that Prince George is the gateway to Northern British Columbia, and Dawson Creek is just the start of Northern British Columbia, and why haven't you gone any further? So I had reservations on the amount of money that they do want us to put into this pool. And my own personal thoughts are, people are gonna come here anyways. Do we really need to be funding the rest of British Columbia to attract a few more people here that are gonna come here anyways?
If I may, it's important that we have relationships with provincial and federal organizations because it's an efficient use of funds. They can extend our message and the marketing reach. So in a sense, there is layers of the industry, and there's layers of marketing, and it's very complicated. On a more regional and Northern B.C. level, we both have an opportunity to represent the province and Northern B.C. We attend various shows on behalf of the province and also, like you say, Northern B.C. region. For instance, Samantha will be in Tampa, Florida in mid-January, and I'm in Arizona in Coeur d'Alene. And we're meeting face-to-face with all of those, with all of the visitors, possible visitors. And those events are, in a sense, subsidized through the relationships with the provincial investment and then the regional investment with Northern B.C. Tourism. So it is rather complicated, but I think that the concerns were certainly well-presented of, say, the lack of the real northern, the northern images. They were looking more to the images of the Northwest, of which there were in the glaciers and whatnot. But I think they went home with a strong message. So I hope that sort of helps you, give you some sense that we're still out there beating the bushes and connecting with people.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you so much for coming this morning and updating us. It's a pleasure. Always good to see you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we'll take a break, and then hopefully our next, our final delegation will be here by then. So we'll take a five-minute break, please. So we're gonna move back into our delegation agenda. Item 6.3, we have Dan Buckner, Vice President, and Lori Ever, Program Manager from the Peter Wahi Leadership Institute of BAM Center in attendance this morning regarding the Community of Leaders program that's being proposed for the city of Dawson Creek. I've updated the council a couple of times on the program, and once just after, shortly after a meeting last fall, and then again recently in regards to the leadership program that's being proposed for the community. And Lori and Dan are here today to give us a bit more detail in that regard. I also want to introduce and welcome, as part of the delegation, Brian Leivers from Encana, you know, Leebelt? And Patsy Vick from Encana and Calgary, sponsoring this on behalf of Encana. So I appreciate you guys making the trip to Dawson Creek this morning and giving us an update on the Community Leadership Program, welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors, for having us here this morning to speak to you a little bit about the Community of Leaders program and the opportunity to engage with the city of Dawson Creek. Can I get the, how do I move these slides?
It's, that should be working.
This one here?
Yeah. Advance it?
Oh, is that how it works? You advance it?
I don't think what you did is right.
Well, you know, turn it off now.
That thing, there you go. There you go.
Okay. So what we thought we'd do is just take a couple of minutes to talk about the BAM Center and the Wahi Institute. Just give you one or two minutes on that, and I'll do that. And then Lori is gonna take you through the Community of Leaders programs that we've run for the last few years, talk about the work that we've done, and then also talk at a high level about what we might do with the city here in Dawson Creek. And then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Does that sound like a good use of our time? Okay. So first of all, the BAM Center. The BAM Center is the world's largest art incubator. So renowned artists from all over the world come to the BAM Center to spend time to advance their art. It's also a convening place. So groups and associations and businesses come there from all...
all over the world to conferences and summits and think tanks and talk about some of the world's biggest issues. And just a little history there, the Aboriginal people have been gathering at the foot of Buffalo Mountain, where BAM Center is, for the last 10,000 years. So it's been a place where people have come together for a long, long time. Also a part of the BAM Center is the Peter Laheed Leadership Institute, and it's a renowned leadership development organization. It's been working with leaders from the private sector, the public sector, nonprofits, Aboriginal communities, local governments for over 60 years to help leaders become more effective. And a couple of things that we've come to know is that the conventional approach to leadership is insufficient to deal with a lot of the complex challenges that our businesses and our communities face today. And so what we do is we work with groups of leaders, or leaders within networks, on complex challenges that they face as a way to help them develop their collective leadership And the Community of Leaders program is one such program that, where we work with groups of leaders around an issue that they're facing collectively, help them to come up with some innovative solution to those, and at the same time, develop their leadership, their, their leadership capabilities. So I'm going to turn it over to Lori, and she's going to talk a little bit about what we've done in the Community of Leaders program.
Great. And my ears are totally plugged from the flight, so I'm disoriented. I'm like, woo! So if you, if you're talking to me and I'm not, I'm not responding, it's because I don't know you're talking to me. The Community of Leaders program is something that we initiated five years ago in partnership with Encana, and the intent there was really to, to enhance the vitality of the communities in which Encana operates, and to do so by investing in the leadership capacity of citizens in those communities. Over those years, we've learned a lot about what really works in this program. We've tried a lot of things. We've worked with a number of communities. We've worked with 59 communities, and leaders from local governments, and also citizen leaders, leaders in the nonprofit sector. And what we've discovered is that there are a few elements that really are critical to making this program incredibly effective. And Dan spoke to some of the, some of those essential ingredients. One is that we just, we work with a group of individuals in the community that have been brought together because they have diverse perspectives, different areas of expertise, and are interested in creating positive change in the community. We put to that group a complex challenge that is a priority for the community, and work with that group over a period of eight months to tackle the challenge and also to build the leadership capacity, leadership capacity of that group. What we've discovered is that the most effective way to do this is to work really closely with council. And the three, the three kind of elements of council that, of working with council that is important is, actually, no, that's not the right slide, is to work with council to identify what is a priority challenge that is facing the community, or a priority opportunity that would really make sense for a group of citizen leaders to tackle collectively. The second is to work with council to identify who should be a part of that group. Are there specific individuals that should be a part of it? Are there particular perspectives that would be ideal to have represented in the group? Or are there different areas of expertise that really would make sense to have involved? And then the third part is really to ensure that the work that this group is engaged in over the eight months is somehow connected to the agenda that council is pursuing over the course of this year. So, the, the timeline that's been proposed, and actually, as the mayor has, has indicated in conversations that we've had previously, there is a really great alignment between the nice flow of this program and the particular timeline that this council is facing over the next 12 months. So ideally, we would integrate with the strategic planning exercise that you would undertake as a council, and in that process, identify what is one or two of the priority topics that you're trying to examine and address that might be appropriate for a group of citizens to dive into. In March, that is sort of an appropriate kind of time when we would then begin to, to identify who would be a part of this group, and extend invitations, and bring those people together. In May, for a kickoff workshop, where we would spend three days in a retreat setting to, to set the stage and to then begin to get into the work. Over the course of sort of June to September, we would provide coaching and support for the individual projects, the different projects. There may be one, there may be multiple initiatives or projects that the group initiates and then, and then works on over the, over the course of those months. And then in October, or sometime in the fall, it might make sense, depending on the nature of the challenge, for a group of, a broader community forum to take place. Possibly, there might be some broader community engagement opportunities that the, that the group wants to pursue. And then in the fall, later in the fall, a follow-up workshop would take place, so through another three- or two-and-a-half-day retreat with those, with those individuals to really bookend the experience and to, and to figure out what it is that that group wants to bring forward to council, to then have this group take forward, or consider, or integrate into the agenda as you go forward, as appropriate. So I've talked really through some of this, but just to kind of rewind about what this, what the flow of this program could look like. January and February, we would propose that we would engage with council to help select those strategic topics, and specifically, also, what is wonderful is if council can help us, can sort of co-extend that invitation to individuals to participate in the program. And then what else is kind of, what else have I maybe missed there? No, I think I've talked about that all. So Dan is going to maybe talk a little bit more about, about our approach.
Well, there's, one of the underlying fundamentals here is the idea that when you're dealing with really complex challenges, it's really, it's really about networks and networks of people. And so finding the right people to participate in this, depending on the challenge, is critical. So it's not a, it's about leading in the context of a network, and not, not just leading in the context of a single organization. So the selection of those individuals is key, and that's something we'd work with you on.
So again, in, in the work that we've done over these past five years, we've, we've identified, identified some key success factors. One is that strong link to council strategic planning. It's, it's really key that this group is working on something that actually matters to the community, and that there is a body that is empowered and, and focused on continuing to move that, that forward, that work forward over the longer term. That the composition of the group is carefully considered, so there's a real diverse mix of perspectives in that group, and that the perspectives that really need to be brought to bear on the particular challenge that they are going to engage with is, is involved. So we really look to council to help us identify what those key perspectives might be, and what those key areas of expertise might be that should be represented. And throughout the process, it's wonderful to be able to have a dialogue, to just share what's coming up, and to be able to make sure that, that as that eight months is progressing, council is aware of how that's going, so that when there's a culmination at the end, and there's a presentation back to council, you've got some heads up about sort of what direction that's been heading. In the past, we've used the BAM Center as the retreat center. It's important to be able to have a place where this group can convene, that it, that kind of allows them to step away from their regular, everyday life, and the business of, of work and family and all of that, to really focus. So we would need to identify somewhere that would be appropriate and ideal for that to happen for residents from Dawson Creek. We're not proposing that the BAM Center is the right one, we've got some other ideas. And the other thing that's really critical is to have somebody that is on city staff that can help us with logistics on the ground, so that our logistics people and cities' logistics folks can be aligned and can, can just keep things ticking along. So our role in the, in the program is to design the program and to facilitate that. We've identified a handful of facilitators for this project that are incredibly talented and experienced. Dan, in, in terms of what he brings on, on design thinking and organizational development, Charles Holmes is a BC-based facilitator and educator, who does a lot of work with community organization, with communities, and is incredibly talented. And Elaine Bro is one of the facilitators who's been involved with this program many times over the last five years, and can really help to carry the threads forward of the things that we've learned. So we provide the workshops, the coaching, and the project support, and we also provide engagement with council to help identify or frame the challenge. You know, partly, it's also not just about identifying a good challenge for the group to work on, but also how do you frame it in such a way that it's really going to be something that they're going to be able to, to dive into and make progress on, and to exchange information, and then to respond as needs emerge. Things come up, things kind of change, and so we're kind of, we're, we're poised and kind of ready to, to adapt if need be. And just a note about Encana. Encana's been an incredible supporter of this work over these years, and Encana supports the development of leaders located in the communities where they live and operate, and invest in programs such as Community of Leaders to help support community needs and build sustainable communities. They're a really great partner in this program, and they've sponsored this since 2008. And we look forward to, to working with them in, in, in ways that may be appropriate or may, you know, it, it can actually really depend on the nature of the program as things unroll, unfold, but we know that we've got them in the corner if we need them. And that's sort of the overview.
So, thank you.
And we'd love to hear from you.
And so I just want to put a little bit of context in it back for council in terms of, when Patsy reached out to me from Encana, I'm going to say last fall, September-ish, sometime October, and explained this program to me in terms of Encana's sponsorship of the Community of Leadership program, and as Lori indicated, the different models that has been used over the last five or six years. Traditionally, it's been where Encana or Sonovus reach out to communities in which they have done, and have operations, and, and so they've selected community leaders from each of those communities as a group and then move forward. And so when Patsy spoke to me about this one, was that they wanted to offer this specifically to Dawson Creek and our community. To me, as the delegations explained, is that it gives us the opportunity to develop the leadership within our community, to our citizens and our business leaders within our community, the opportunity to work with a facilitated group and process that I think brings value, not only to building that leadership capacity and skill for people that may not get that opportunity in any other way, so I saw that as a huge opportunity. And then anticipating that we have a new council coming in in December, and for us to be able to take that approach and say, "Okay, if we identify a specific process or a specific issue that flows from our strategic planning exercise," whatever that may be, it gives us then the opportunity to leverage that and have that work take place within the community, by, by community members and by council. And so that's why I thought it was really important to be able to have them come today and give us an overview of the program and what was being proposed, so the council had a better understanding of it. So I'll throw it out to question.
Counselor McFadden?
Thank you. Good morning, and welcome, and welcome to, I guess, from Encana, too. If I understand what you were saying was that when council hunkers down to do the strategic planning, that we could or should involve community members from the community at large to be involved in that progress, or that program? Is that what I understood you to say?
That's not, not actually, that's not really specifically our recommendation.
Okay.
It's more that you would take into your strategic planning deliberations this opportunity. You would consider, given, given the issues, given the challenges and the opportunities before us, is there a particular one or two that would jump out as just perfectly ripe for a group of citizen leaders to tackle? To go away, to spend some time over a period of eight months, to, to really dig into that and to surface some new insights, engage with the community if necessary, to surface some new insights, and to come up with some new and novel approaches to that particular issue? So just to really think about that opportunity as you go through your strategic planning process.
So if something cropped up in our strategic planning, we could task that out to a community group, say, "Here, here's the, here's one of the things that we think is important." And then they would do their work and report back to us? Is that what you're, that's more the way it would be?
That's basically, that's basically the model, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Jevetkov?
When, when you start this process, how many people do you anticipate being involved from the community?
That's a good question. There's sort of a, a magic window. You need to have at least eight people, generally speaking, to have that, that group really function as a group, and no more than 25. So there would be, and some range in there would be fine, you know, and it would, so it would probably depend on a number of factors. When we kind of got down to, to identifying what is the particular area that this group will focus, then it'll begin to become more apparent, sort of what is the right makeup of the cohort.
Thank you. Further question?
What, what communities have you gone through this process with before?
In the past year, we went through the process with Lac-Labiche at the county level, and also with, with Newell County in Alberta. Those are the two communities where we have, we've done this Community of Leaders program in this particular way, and so that, those programs are actually, have just, have just wrapped up. The other, the previous four years, we've approached the Community of Leaders program in different ways. So we may have done a call-out to the community to find nonprofit leaders to work on strategic leadership, for example. One year, the, the program was entirely focused on mayors and CAOs. It was a program designed specifically around that group. So over time, we've refined, and we've, we've trialed different, different models, and this past year, the culmination of, of the various years that we've been engaged, was this model where we have a group of citizen leaders that is brought together with direction from council to figure out, how do we build that cohort, what's the challenge, and working direct, working with council and this group. And it was incredibly successful, really effective, and that's the model that we, that we want to bring forward.
Counselor Rogers?
What does this cost? What's it going to cost the citizens of Dawson Creek to have us take this course?
Because Encana is, is sponsoring this, it, there is no cost. The only cost is administratively, we need a little bit of staff time to be able to liaise with council and to be able to do things like identify the people that we want to invite to be participants, and then to help, you know, get those invitations out, and to help actually with some communications with, with those people, but it's, that's fairly minor. And also to help logistically in terms of figuring out an ideal location and helping to arrange that, and some of, some of that kind of work, you'll have more expertise here in the community to, to actually... to to actually make that happen. But other than that, there is no cost. And it's it's not us, it's community members.
That's right.
It could be. That's another good point, actually. You know, council could determine that there should be a representative or representatives from council who are who are in the cohort. In fact, Lac Lebiche went through this process and decided that the whole that the group, the cohort, would actually be mayor and council. And they were the ones that went through that process. That was a pretty unique circumstance. However, I don't imagine that that would happen very, very often, and it wouldn't be appropriate in a lot of other cases, I wouldn't imagine.
Patsy?
If I could just add, and maybe you can speak to this, that the model has a bit of flexibility in it so that it can be influenced by the wants and needs and desires of the council. So you can shape it to what, you know, your strategy session may reveal, some things that could be adapted into a model that you can sort of shape to meet those needs, if you could speak to that.
Yeah, that's a really good point. There is a ton of flexibility. And, you know, I think what we're what we're bringing forward are some insights and some some practices that we've developed over time. But just as Patsy has articulated, there's there's a ton of flexibility. So yes, and if in the course of your strategic planning, you do discover some some opportunities that we could address more effectively by changing a little bit what how we propose to actually, you know, engage in the work, that's that's absolutely on the table.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Parslow?
Not so much a question. I mean, I I really like what I'm hearing. Really appreciate Encana's support for this. It sort of fits into everything else they do in support of the community, trying to develop capacity. I'm I can see certainly some things emerging. I would anticipate things emerging from council's strategic planning. But I can't help forget the axiom of Stephen Trebys, you know, that without involvement there's no commitment. So I'd hope there would be some form of commitment from council to be engaged with this. The question I have is, this is a very busy community. We have many, many talented people, but they seem to be very, very busy. We have a lot of snowbirds. And then when the summer comes here, we have a lot of people who seem to devote most of their time to camping and so on. So I see the main challenge is being getting a a truly committed group, community group, and people with the right perspective, not just representing an interest group, but, you know, the community as a total. So do you have any criteria for the engagement in this process as it that might? Because I can see that that being the number one challenge. I mean, council has already tried to get a community group on a very major issue of fiscal gap challenges of the city with no luck, in spite of about a month's effort in that. So any any comments about composition and how you can get the right people to the table?
That's a really good question. Dan, I see you nodding. Do you feel like you want to?
Oh, no, I agree. I think I think that is the 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 main issue. It's going to be the, you know, the main issue. And, you know, at some level, we're, you know, we're going to have to rely on your ability to actually attract those kind of people, which sounds like that's not an easy thing to do. The other thing may be the the nature of the challenge that's selected. You know, if it's a challenge that's of importance to the right people, they're more likely to be engaged. And we do ask when people commit to this that they commit to actually participating in the entire program. And as Laurie said, there is a lot of flexibility. And so we we laid out a rough timeline there of months. You know, if those don't work because of the way life happens here, then we'll have to adjust to that, right? And maybe it'll take longer than eight months. Maybe maybe we can't expect anything to happen in July and August, right? And so we just have to build that into our planning. But I think you make a really good point. That's that's one of the most difficult things.
One of the, to me, one of the aspects that I think will be a little different here is you're looking at somebody, a business, a small business owner or a business person who now is looking at the opportunity of their own personal and professional development opportunity and working in something like this. I think Cameron Stoltz, who's Legacy Market, and he's working on his master's degree right now. So there's some young business people in our community that are looking for that development opportunity. And I see that, the leadership development, as such an important aspect to this, more so than the benefits we get as a community of having the attention driven to a particular objective we may find flow from our strategic exercise. But I see that. And so I I hope, I think that we would, when Patsy and Laurie and Dan and I had the conversation about what was being proposed for the community, potentially 12 or 15 business community people to have the opportunity at development, personal or professional development, I think changes it a little bit to me. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll see that willingness from people that want to be involved. But we it's it's like Counselor Parslow says, it's an issue. People are busy, so.
Certainly, certainly the the people who participated in the last, over the last year, that's one of the main reasons why they participated. They they and a lot of them were small business people. You know, they saw it as an opportunity for them to develop. So that's a really good point, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Just one.
Counselor Rogers?
Is there any specific types of groups of people that you would like to see? Or or is it just whoever you?
That's another really good question. It depends so much on the challenge, the nature of the challenge. And so whose voices and whose perspectives could not only help to bring to the group some important knowledge about the nature of the issue, but also perspectives that are very, very different than what might be the dominant perspective about that particular issue? So there may be some, there may be some groups that are marginalized or 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 just aren't, don't have as much access to the conversation maybe about a particular challenge. That would be great to have that kind of perspective in the room. And, you know, and really, sort of our hallmark is in bringing groups together that truly are that truly are diverse, that look at things very differently, approach things very differently. There's a lot of richness in that. There's a lot of creative creative potential in that and also in different areas of expertise. You know, one of the things that we look for is individuals who may have a particular domain of expertise but have demonstrated that they can actually jump to another domain and contribute there. So maybe someone who's a trained architect but is now doing videography as their kind of bread and butter. So people who have have demonstrated the ability to to bring one frame into another frame and and then see kind of some interesting kind of possibilities that emerge from that. That's one of the things that we that we look for.
Sounds like me.
Well, there you go. So I'll just write down your name.
Thank you so much. And so in conclusion, we first appreciate Encana, them identifying the city of Dawson Creek as a potential partner to bring this to the community. I think it's a great, amazing opportunity for our community. And to the to Laurie and Dan, thank you for making the trip today. And we appreciate the presentation. We really look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to work together, and we'll bring it back under Mayor's business.
Great.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, it's great to meet you all.
Thanks so much.
So now we'll be back into our regular agenda items. We were in Bylaws eight, eight point six. We have zoning amendment bylaw number 4246, Carl Dolan's 2014 1100 Alaska Avenue. Counselor Schuman? Seconded, Counselor McFadden, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Eight point seven, we have report number 15003 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding Council Procedure Amendment bylaw. Counselor Parslow, moved? Seconded. Counselor Rogers, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Eight eight, we have a report from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development regarding Zoning Amendment bylaw 4254 2015, for consideration of first two readings. Counselor Schuman? Seconded, Counselor Wilber, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. Now I want to go back into my reports.
Excuse me. You you said earlier that we would be?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That we lettered, that we see. I just wanted to make a point about that letter that I think we should just, with staff's help, just crystallize. Thank you, sir. There's a statement in the second paragraph. I'll read it. The third sentence, the fourth sentence. "We will transfer 10 acres of land to the city in Lew for the development of a stormwater retention area," it should read, "which would serve the eastern portion of the neighborhood plan area." Now, I think the word will, I mean, they want to, if they want to transfer, we have to be willing to accept that. And I again, I just want to have here staff's comments in public here. Thought that they would be not making them anyway, but it is, it is not a done deal. We don't have to accept this. The idea is that the development of this retention pond would be the developer's responsibility. I'd just like a comment from Jim about that.
Through your worship, those works are part of the developer's responsibility, developer's singular or plural, depending on whether they're cooperating responsibility. Once the works are complete, exactly like a sidewalk or a roadway or a streetlight, they become the property of the city to operate and maintain. The developer builds them, and then they come to the ownership of the city. In terms of whether it would be acceptable to council to have a catchment, water catchment system specific to the east side that was not coordinated with the catchment system for the west side of the development, we haven't seen any plans. I couldn't give you an opinion on that, but it would ultimately be council's decision. You're certainly not committed to any of that.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
One further comment. The zoning amendment, I support it going to public hearing. I just want to, first, it's council's understanding, I will not be supporting it through the third reading if it stays as it is because I have real problems with the exemption of CD2.
Sure. And that'll be all part of, obviously, we have a public hearing will be set for it on January 19th. And we're starting to now get some additional material fed through, and hopefully, that's the process, right? Hopefully, that's the process that we go through and we get that input from the public, from the citizens and from the investors, developers, and contractors to help us guide and make that best decision. Jim?
So since no one read out the actual recommendation, just for the interests of the public, the recommendation is that you would do a formal public hearing, January 19th at 7:00 p.m. in the Calvin Crook Center, and that you would then convene a special meeting in council chambers at 8:30 in the morning, 8:30 a.m. the following day, January 20th, to make your ultimate decision.
Yes. Yeah, and so that was, I think, our discussion at our last meeting in December was, you know, let's get this public hearing in the evening hours so that we allow a greater, hopefully, input from public and everyone who's got some interest in it and be able to guide us through that decision-making process. So 7:00 p.m.
And who knows? I may hear something that may change my mind.
Absolutely. So I want to go back now. Item seven are reports. We have 7.1, we have a report number 15001 from the Chief Administrative Officer regarding our Memorial Arena, Kin Arena, and Curling Rink. Obviously, some detail here in terms of the impacts to core facilities, and I'll use the term core facilities for our community as it relates to that Memorial Arena in particular, but also the Curling Rink, and also the Kin Arena, and also the implications to the Encana Event Center. Having significant implications to an iconic kind of facility, in my view, that has been iconic in this community over the last 60 or 70 years. However, when it was built in 50, the Memorial Arena built in 1955, 56, sometime in there, was it the Memorial Arena named after in memoriam to the veterans, right, for the war? And as so named in 1955, 56, it collapsed in 97, 98. The roof collapsed as a result of the snow load. And so now, today, we're faced with, obviously, the report that we've got from the CAO in regards to the potential outlay of over $3 million to replace the mechanical components, potentially 1.2, 1.3 million dollars for chiller condenser, that type of equipment, and then potentially another one and a half million dollars if that pad and the associated lines that feed and freeze the ice underneath there are in potentially damaged. And so you have to go into it. I think we do have to go into it with that perspective, that if you're going to fix it, you're, once you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound, and there's no turning back once you make that decision. And so obviously, Jim's recommendations to us in terms of the Memorial Arena and what we do and how we do it are today part of this discussion that we need to have. And so I, to me, there's about four aspects to this that I think we need to consider as council and how we move it forward. First is that 3 million, three plus for the Memorial Arena. The next piece is then the Memorial or the Curling Rink, in terms of what do we do with the decision around the Curling Rink until such time as we make a decision on the Memorial Arena? And and then, thirdly, the Kids, Kin Arena, and outlined in the report appropriately, 25 years old, built in 88 for the B.C. Winter Games and as our second ice facility. And then, fourthly, the Encana Event Center as now our primary ice surface, if I can use that term, or the the functioning ice surface that is replacing that Memorial Arena. And then, to me, there's a consideration in there that we have to understand. For this year, we've said to the user groups, you are going to use that facility now as another ice facility. We're not going to change the rate that we charge based on our user rates policy because you've locked into their year. But come 2015 ice year in September, if that's the ice surface, we have a rates and users' fee that we're going to need to understand how that impacts the user groups, all of them, minor hockey and speed skaters and figure skaters and all of them. That's the operating cost for that and the implications to us. So I think there's some complexities lying and laying in here in terms of what we need to do and how we need to do it. And so I'm going to throw it open first to, before we make a motion, maybe just to have a bit of a roundtable conversation so that we don't get locked into a motion that it's going to take us a whole bunch of time to get through. So if council are okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll just allow for some comments. Counselor Parslow?
This is unfortunate, but it's a reality we have to deal with. It's a reality of, I guess, associated with aging infrastructure, and it's not something I think that will be easily dealt with as we look at the total infrastructure, sewage, roads, you name it. For me, how council decides on this is, for me, going to be a very clear indicator of how serious we are about dealing with the fiscal gap. Because this is all around fiscal responsibility as well as long-term planning for capital replacement, and it's also about provision of services which I would put under the quality of life. I think we have with the Encana Event Center an underutilized facility. And I see that we're lucky that we have that safety valve for this year, but I think it's something that we should really engage in on how can we use this community asset in a better way for the in a better way for the benefit of the community. So, as I say, this, to me, is going to be a bellwether decision on the nature of this council in dealing with the fiscal gap. It will, it will really be something that would be, if we don't deal with this one properly, in my view, we're missing, missing the boat completely with the fiscal gap discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jevkoff?
To me, this, the whole issue of, all of the recommendations in this report need to be dealt with in the context of spending, all spending. And the fiscal gap is one of the critical points. But I don't think that you, that we should be dealing with this issue as a one-off because there's lots of other aspects to spending in the city that may have an effect on this. To me, it's a matter of priorities. And if we can look at what the city is spending money on and determine some priorities, this will fit in there somewhere. So that's why I think it's important to deal with it in the bigger context. I don't think that dealing with it on a one-off basis is fair to dealing with the fiscal gap. I think we have to look at the big picture.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers?
I'm going to get hurt for saying this. You've got three buildings that are aging or have aged out. Nobody has said anything about why don't, I know it's, I know everybody said, "No more capital projects." But it has to be said that there is the other option of building a new facility that encompasses the curling rink and two other rinks. I know they've done it in Spirit River where they've, they've built new rinks. And I think their curling rink is also encompassed in that one building. The other thing is, is do you want to keep throwing money after bad? You know, your, your car's got a blown engine. Do you want to buy a new car or do you want to fix that motor? It's just something that I thought needed to be said regarding that if, if, because there are people that are going to be out there that are going to say, "Why don't we just get rid of those three buildings and build three and encompass it in one? It'll be more energy efficient and everything else and you're already spending over three million dollars. How much more is this other project going to cost, et cetera?" I thought that it should be said. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Further comments?
Oh, I know.
You know, I think honestly, you look at our, and it was, the comment is, right, it's the aging infrastructure and we need to plan, I think, the future of what it is we do and how we do it and with respect to our facilities and the core infrastructure we have with water, sewer, roads. And as Councillor Jevkoff talks about, that prioritization, I think that's part of it, right? The priority is, how do we prioritize what's going to be the priority capital projects? When we talk about fiscal gap, to me, you got it, we got it, we got to understand the impacts of user groups and user fees as it relates to how they can afford to participate in recreational activities. And so if that, Encana Event Center as a, as a rink, yes, thank goodness we have it. But it wasn't, it's an event center. It wasn't designed as a rink. It was put in there after the fact. And if the operating costs for our user groups double because we're operating a facility that size over the memorial arena, that has big impacts to them and to us and our, and our operating costs. And so there's all those implications to us, I think, in the planning process that I think we're all aware of, understanding of. But we need to, I think, also plan to give some direction to administration in terms of how we move it forward. And so I'm going to kind of lay it out as I opened up from the first. I'm not in favor of saying we're going to spend three-plus million dollars into the memorial arena today where we have a building that's sixty or seventy years old without having some diligence put into the planning process for it. I think we need to ensure, the thing that I'm worried about is that kids arena, the kin arena, that if we don't have a reliability of an ice surface, that kids arena, in the interim while we go through whatever this planning process is, if it takes us one year, two years or ten years, whatever it is, we got to, I think, make sure that that twenty-five-year-old or twenty-six-year-old facility can get us two or three or four more years. So I think we need to, to me, put that into the pauper and ensure that if we have to put some money into that mechanical system to ensure that we don't have a failure there, that we do that. And look at the options for our curling rink in terms of saying, what's, is there, is there a bar there that we're willing to go to? See, if we can get that facility opened again for a year or two or three years to get us through this planning process of what we do down there in one complex or replace or not replace or whatever, then is there a bar there that we should set under Jim's recommendation of a hundred grand or a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the curling rink to try to get it reopened? And to me, curling rink is part of our community. It's the fabric of our community. And this piece is for us about the quality of life and the amenities we offer. We're trying to build our community. We're trying to grow it. We're trying to attract people to come to live here. And part of that is the industry guys that are coming in here and service guys are going to say, "Well, we need, we're coming here because we're going to come to work, but we need the amenities for our families." And so that's the dilemma, I think, we're faced with in terms of how we get that balance. So for me, it's about now, I'm not in favor of putting the three million into the rink until we do a planning process. And however, whatever that looks like, we'll lay that out in the coming months. Let's ensure that we got reliability in that kin arena and if it's going to cost us a hundred or two hundred to give us two or three years, and let's get that estimation and some of that preliminary work done. And the same for the curling rink. And then understand the cost implications for our user groups for operating the Encana Event Center in the years to come as a facility because that's going to have, if minor hockey or curlers or these people are having trouble today because of costs, they're going to go up with us providing that Encana Event Center. We need to understand that cost implications for our user groups and for us in our budgeting process now operating the Encana Event Center as a rink. And what does it do overlaying then our concerts and the events that we put on there as well in addition, in that contract we have with the Encana Event Center? That's kind of how I'm, Councillor Parslow?
Yes, I think I'm pretty well with you to, to a large degree, the need for planning. Staff makes mention of what was lacking in the development of the Calvin Crook Cultural Center. We don't want any replication of that. So I think there's a lot of work here. My, I guess the one caveat I have, and we have an existing contract with Global Spectrum, I know that. I can't say that, I think we need to look at that. Is there ways of reopening that contract in light of changed circumstances? I just don't know. I'm not advocating for that now because we're just exploring that. But that's one of, some of my, my thoughts because, you know, right now, we have to get permission to use it for community events. There's so many events a year, maybe two or three or something. And yet that's being paid for by the taxpayers. So I, I really wonder about the status quo, I guess, in the conversation around what is right now at the event center. But I, the other side of the equation is that we, we do, as I said before, a previous discussion of this, as we're planning for next year's ice availability, we should also remember that staff tells us that there's only, the metrics, as you use the expression, mayor, is that we have a need for about one point two ice surfaces. So, is there ways of better using the event center for that second ice surface? That also needs to be, to be looked at. So I would differ with Councillor Rogers completely about building new facilities when we have the, an event center that we could possibly repurpose or diversify its purposes. And the notion of two ice surfaces is, should be questioned. And so, I'm thinking that we've got to have something in place for our ice users next, next year. And we need to, so I, I see this as an emergency thing, not something that we can put into the bigger picture. But if, if we don't deal with it now, we will be too late. It's just like the bylaw, zoning bylaw. We've got to get that one settled for the builders or we've got to get something settled in time for adequate advancement of what we're going to be doing next winter season.
And I'm going to respond, first, the B.C. Business just reported that Dawson Creek growth is top growth of communities, small communities in British Columbia, at seven and a half percent over the last five years. And if we see an increase in the growth of our community as a result of the industry, well, you talk about thirty-five or forty percent growth in the next five years potentially. We're not at fifteen thousand people. We're potentially twenty. And what does that do then to the ice users today at one point two? Maybe we're at three point two. Who knows what that is? We need to plan for that. And so to me, we can't look at it from a stop in time picture. We need to plan for it. And so that's my point, is I think we need to really engage in that planning process, but make sure we got reliability of service. And so that's why I think that kin arena is such a critical component to make sure. We cannot be in a situation where the operating costs of this city go up by operating just the Encana Event Center as our sole ice surface, I don't think, for them or for us. Jim?
So your worship, just for clarity, the recommendation says firstly that you commit to spend ninety thousand dollars on gathering information that you need. So twenty-five percent of, or twenty-five thousand of that is a building envelope study on the three facilities. Twenty-five percent of that is to thoroughly investigate the piping and systems at the memorial arena. That you say now that you will not be operating the memorial arena next fall and that you're going to relocate those ice users to Encana. It further asks you to put a hundred thousand dollars aside to repair, upgrade the kin arena to get another couple or three years of use out of it, subject to, or as a result of the recommendations from the consultant. And finally, that you cap expenditures at the curling rink at a hundred and twenty thousand and say if that gets the job done, which we don't know yet because we haven't done the investigation. If that gets the job done, great. If it doesn't, it would also not operate in the fall and that matter would be kicked over to a further budget here. But unless you okay any of these things, nothing is going to happen.
Correct.
So our message to the user groups will be, no idea whether you're going to have ice next year and we're not doing anything to find out. So I would be hopeful that you would make some decisions today.
Yeah, no, and that's, and that's, so that's why, my point in terms of laying it out for them and I think around the basis of your report. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, so listening to the conversation, I think that I would move this recommendation from staff. Do I have to read the whole thing out?
No, Jim summarized it.
Jim did summarize it. Thank you very much, Jim. And I think the mayor was all over it too. So I'm going to move that recommendation.
Thank you. Seconded, Councillor Wilber. Discussion, Councillor Wilber?
I just, just through you to staff, just for, something popped to mind when Jim was talking there. Did we not have some sort of cost estimate of what we are looking at at the curling rink? If we, if we continue to have problems with it?
Yes, and that's where the hundred and twenty thousand figure comes from. But it's supposing that the building envelope is fine and the compressor and condenser are fine. It's an amount for the chiller only.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But to date, that's all that's been discovered.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Schuman?
And the item number six, undertake the needs assessment for future ice users in Dawson Creek. So that would be, we would go out and really thoroughly understand what the need is in the community today and into the future. Is that what number six is all about?
That's correct. That would be the customer-focused end of the equation. The, our proposal is to bring in a consultant. I know you all hate consultants, but what a consultant is-
We all don't hate consultants.
-is someone who has expertise that's not in-house or has time that is not in-house. So I do believe the same work could be done by myself, Mr. Raynard, Mr. Redfern and Ms. Patterson. But all of us would bring our particular biases. Hockey is a big bias for myself, Barry and Duncan. Figure skating is a big bias for Shontay. It would be difficult to convince the various users groups that this was an independent assessment happening. But in addition to that, it would take time that I don't have, that Barry doesn't have, Shontay doesn't have, Duncan doesn't have. That's why you employ a consultant, the one we're suggesting bringing back, Brian Johnson, the same person that did your fees and charges work. He recently did a very similar needs assessment for Calgary, looking exactly all of those things. How is the community growing? How is the, what are the trend lines in this sport? What are the various organizations doing to recruit and retain memberships? If you were to go back in time fifteen, twenty years, you wouldn't find a person in the community who could fathom that broom ball would be dead. If you just asked the broom ball players twenty years ago, you'd have said you needed an entire separate facility just for broom ball.
Good point.
Because that's not how the world works.
Councillor Parslow, first?
Yes. So I'm glad Jim's just said about numbers sits there because, you know, there are sports trends out there and we need to take that into, into this study as well. So I, I feel we have no, no other alternative but to support this.
Yeah, six girls playing minor hockey twenty-five years ago and eighty-five, ninety today.
Yeah.
Councillor Rogers?
I don't skate.
Yeah, you do. You're, you're learning.
I'll try. With the, with the age of the building, I don't, I don't know if we really need a consultant to tell us that the piping in the floor is, I can't swear, not working. It's, it's that, it's that old that, you know, somebody's got to step up and say, "It's done." It's, it's had a twenty-five-year life, lifespan, and we're way beyond that. So I, I look at it and I go, "Do you really need a consultant for that? I don't think so because let's just call it what it is, it's done." With, with the amount of money that, I was looking at the, at the numbers and I was wondering, where did these numbers actually come from? Because to hire somebody to supervise the project for a hundred thousand dollars, I think that's kind of excessive. Are they, is it just a mechanical engineer looking at it saying, "Okay, well, I'm taking my ten percent. I don't care what the cost is." But if you look at making a hundred thousand dollars just on overseeing a project and, and doing some engineering, the engineering is pretty much already all done anyway. So you just got to, all you got to do is put in a, put in a couple of chillers and some pumps. And with my mechanical background, it's not that big of a deal. I, I just, I'm just looking at, at, at the cost of it. And yeah, I think it's excessive.
Thanks. Okay, so the figures there in the, this is, we're talking about the budget proposed for the three-point whatever for the memorial. It uses seven percent for contract management. That's a standard industry fee. And no, a counselor will not be supervising the job. That is not the role of counsel. You, you have alleged to the public that you've learned some lessons from the multiplex in the Calvin Crook Center. A big lesson there was, you hire project management. You don't try to do it in-house. You pay what it costs. Seven percent's an industry standard. That's a hundred grand out of a three-million-dollar budget. If you want to spend your time talking about that hundred grand, go ahead. But I thought we were actually talking about whether you would spend that money or not.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Jevkoff?
You know, I believe that this, this whole recommendation should be taken to budget discussions. I, you know, we're talking about a hundred thousand for the first point, a hundred and twenty for the second point, another fifty-
Three-ten in total.
Three-hundred-and-ten thousand is a significant amount of money. I mean, when we get into budget discussions, we're going to be talking about items that are a lot less than that. I think we need to take it to the budget discussions so we can hash it out in the context of the big picture. So I'll make a motion that we move this to budget discussions.
So, first, we have a motion on the floor already? So it would have to be an amendment?
I made that motion.
So it was moved and seconded?
Oh, okay, sorry.
This is a secondary motion. You, it's basically a referral motion.
Needs a secondary.
Needs a secondary. And then it could actually be discussed on whether it should be referred or not. or not, but not on the main motion.
Okay. So you're making that as a motion, we refer to budget discussions. Counselor Jevakoff, do you have a second? Counselor Rogers? So discussion on the motion. Counselor Schuman?
So I don't agree with that. I think there's some time things going on here, and we put this off till our, like, when would we have to put this off till then? Like, April something?
The capital budget goes first. You normally make capital budget decisions by end of February, basically. But then you take them to the public, so you don't actually make a final determination until late March sometime. So I would suggest that what you would then be saying is there's not going to be ice in the Memorial or the Curling Rink for the 2015-16 season, which may well be your decision in any of it. The Memorial, the Kin, it depends on how fortunate we are.
Yeah, I guess, Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of putting it to the budget deliberations.
Counselor Jevakoff?
Just some clarification on the budget. So we're not going to be talking budget here until March?
No, you have a timeline that was presented to you. Was that the?
Yeah, can you go through the timeline? Yeah, so basically, we're just putting the information together right now. So in the beginning of February, I think it's about February 2nd, that you will get a draft report, and that basically has all the capital that people have put forward, plus an estimate of a couple options to do with tax rates. So at that first meeting, council's looking at all the information that's come forward, and basically having a discussion on whether you want to maintain tax rates, increase tax rates, reduce tax rates. That's basically your biggest decision at that first meeting, in the context of all the information that you receive. Then we have a second budget meeting, and that's basically where you've had a chance to look at all the information, make any changes that you want to do, add anything, and then the package is repurposed, and it goes out to the public for the first consultation. Then you hear what the public has to say about the plan, and then if there's another meeting, and if there's any changes, those are incorporated. So there's about, there's four budget meetings, and there's two public consultations. So it takes about four months where you're going through any changes from the public or from any of yourselves.
Counselor Jevakoff?
Is that how we deal with the fiscal gap?
That's how we deal with the budget.
Okay, how do we deal with the fiscal gap?
Through your worship, that is a piece of work that has not yet been approved as strategic planning, but it would be future-looking. Council's already issued direction on this budget, which says there's going to be no decrease in service. That, the whole budget is being built on that. There are five people in this room who voted for that, two who are newcomers. There's no blank page. If council is going to change its will to look at a decrease in services absent, the recommendations regarding the fiscal gap, council can do that, but it will reverse all the processes you've put in place. So staff has no direction in that regard at all. We are not looking at cutting service in this budget.
All right. So we have a motion to defer. Counselor Parzl?
Yes, just clarification here. Obviously, for some of us, timelines are critical, from the point of view, I shouldn't say some of us, I'm sure it is for all, everyone. So can I have some sort of sense, what is the sort of the no-go date? In other words, when does this have, what's the last date these recommendations could be enacted, so that we've got some certainty around ice for next year, staff? Is it now?
Well, to begin with, there is no certainty around ice for next year. The recommendations are that you gather a bunch of information before you make that decision.
Exactly.
The-
The Encana Event Center.
I can't tell you. I honestly can't tell you that. For the user groups, they wish some certainty as soon as possible. If there is, if there are some elements of these recommendations that need, council needs to defer to another time and discuss in detail, then that's what council will do, and then there will be no work ongoing until that's decided. And that's, this is in the control of council.
Thank you. Further discussion? My worry is, obviously, for me, is the Kin Rena, that second ice surface, and we need to make sure that we get that work underway as quickly as we can to ensure that we don't have experienced a similar hiccup next year with that, and so we need to do whatever we can to ensure stability with that facility, in my view, and get the work proceeding in terms of the direction as we have. And so if we put it off till April or May, we potentially have an issue of, we can't, you can't do the work, the investigative work and the maintenance work in that Kin Arena to ensure reliability by doing it in a two-month window, to have it ready for September, or a three-month window, I think. That's what I, and so that's my worry about deferring. Further discussion on the motion to refer to defer to budget? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? defeated? Back to the original motion? Any further discussion? Counselor Parzl?
Just something that came to my head when we're talking about the operation of the Encana Event Center. With, the community is facing a bit of a crisis here, from the point of view of quality of life issues. And surely, I think we can, should try to engage in some discussions with Global Spectrum about our community use of that facility. Because I don't see there's a big issue. I think about how the, what was the name of the hockey team we had here? The Rage Hockey Team. You know, there, there was ice for hockey season, there was put-down of boards and stuff. So the operation worked well with entertainment and ice usage. So I think we just need to think about the regime that we're operating under, if we can tease that a little bit, so that the user fees are not going to be outrageous.
Jim? Through your worship, the, it's clear that if a decision is made, which at the moment, we don't have one, that there's going to be ice in Encana, not just from January till March of this year, but also for the 15-16 ice season. You're obviously going to want to engage Global Spectrum in what that looks like, so they can give you some budget numbers, which will lead you to examine your fees and charges, because I'm not sure that you're going to want the same cost recovery there as you have, are currently enjoying at Memorial, because it would mean a significant increase in fees for the users. So that's one piece. That's a completely separate piece from revisions to the use of the Encana Event Center for more community purposes. Those are, Global Spectrum doesn't give a rodents behind what you use that facility for. They get their management fee for running the thing. You can use it in whatever way you want. They'll just give you the budget impacts of that. It'll be up to you to decide how much subsidy you're willing to endure for greater community use. I mean, that's, that's completely in, it's not a contract issue, that's completely in council's hands.
The issue, I guess, for me, and when I talk about the Encana Event Center, is this whole aspect of operating costs, because if, it's going to cost us more money to provide ice to the users in the Encana Event Center than it does the Memorial Arena. And so if we don't change our user policy, then the kids, the user groups, whoever are paying more, and that impacts them in terms of participation and all that stuff. And if we keep the rate the same at the Memorial Arena, then that impacts us and our budget, and the fiscal gap, and increasing costs, and all that stuff. We need to have that understanding. And I think then that layers into our planning process for what we do with the Memorial Arena, because it's, the capital is one thing, but if you spend $10 million bucks on a new facility, but you're spending an additional million or a million and a half and operating today, that $10 million bucks gets eaten up pretty quickly. And so to me, that's the whole planning piece we need to maneuver through for the benefits of us, and our residents, and the users, and all that. Counselor Jevakoff?
Don't we have an idea of what those costs are now? I mean, we, did we not approve putting ice in the Encana Center at the last meeting?
So the net additional cost for this January to March period was about 100,000, was the net extra cost. So that's what you okayed, a net extra cost of about 100,000 to be in Encana versus Memorial for a period of basically, beginning of January till end of March.
Counselor Wilbur?
I just, annoyingly, part of the recommendation is that, you know, kind of testing the Memorial Arena as a drive-floor facility, too, over that season, and seeing what we can generate there. And I'm just wondering, after given cost to run that, is it the expectation that maybe we're going to see some income off that to offset that higher cost of using the event center? Is that ability to do that there?
Through your worship, so we've never run such a facility, so we have to reach out to folks who have. Fort St. John recently converted an ice, former ice arena to an indoor soccer facility. So what we discovered is, your floor, your concrete floor can't be used as is, that it's too slippery, basically. So there are, you can go the whole extent of a subfloor and a turf, which they have in Fort St. John, or you can put coverings over, so it can be multi-use, everything from basketball to indoor soccer. But there'll be expense to that. So our goal would be to make sure that our revenue's covered any expense we put into it, but I don't think it would be a realistic expectation in the first year that we would be generating extra.
But it's something we would expect to lead up to.
Yeah, exactly.
But then you've got light, and you've got heat, and you've got liability.
I know.
Counselor Rogers?
What if the Kin Arena is determined that it's only got like a year in? What if we, what if we ended up putting in a whole bunch of money into getting the Kin going, and then next year, we're sitting here going, oh, guess what? That floor has now failed as well. So now you're going to end up with no ring, except for the one in Encana.
And so to me, that's the piece about, we do the planning process and make sure that we try to provide reliability of that second facility for three or four years to get us through what is the future look like for a facility? And is it replacing them, or what does it look like? That, to me, we need to make sure, I think, that we try to provide as much as possible the reliability of that Kin Arena facility, and it's a year, that equipment's a year younger than-
We're still only talking about extending its lifespan by two, three years. The, I don't for one minute doubt that Counselor Rogers is correct, that the life cycle is over for the, imminently over for those facilities down there. This work is to determine that for a fact, so that it is-
Does he have the information?
Easier to have the discussion with the users.
Counselor Jevakoff?
That $100,000 extra for the Encana Center, what percentage of use is that based on? Is that the same usage as we would have gotten from the Memorial?
That's correct. It's based on the Memorial schedule that had already been developed.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's frustrating to me on the Kin Arena, as it is to spend 100 or 200 on it, knowing that the life cycle is only hopefully get two or three years. But we've got to try and get to that planning stage through what does the future look like, or the future of our facilities as it relates to that, right?
So that brings up a question. When does this planning business start?
Once we-
We've got to start this right away.
Like tomorrow, or?
Yeah.
Well, the ore part of that work wouldn't start until we had these studies done, until we had the building envelope studies, the investigation of the Curling Rink and Memorial Arena's physical situation, the needs assessment. You wouldn't have enough information to do your work until that was done.
Counselor Schuman?
Which is my point, well, is the point I was wanting to make with waving my arms over here. We need all of this information in order to make these decisions that council is talking about here. Like, we can't go ahead and decide to build a new facility, or, you know, do this or that or the other thing, without the information that we're going to gain from this recommendation, the points in this recommendation. So we need to get-
Well, of course, you can. It just hasn't worked out very well the times you've done that.
Yeah, I know, Jim. So this is the reason I moved this recommendation, is to get the information that we need to make an informed decision moving forward.
Question's been called.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you.
So now to item nine, mayor's business. I just wanted to give a quick update. You know, over the Christmas season, I got a call from Caitlin Trebo, who was putting on a concert at the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts Friday, Saturday night. Friday night, she had the youth and the children there, and Saturday night, the adolescent, the adults, and she wanted me to attend just on behalf of the city. And, you know, it was really, really impressive to see those kids participating Friday night in the choir, and the risers that the Oilman's Association graciously brought forward through Counselor Jevakoff and his group that raised the, donated the dough for that. It was amazing to see those kids, and the people in the event center, or the art center that night, really, it really was very, very impressive to see the choir performing that night, and the parents, it's such a great atmosphere. And so I really wanted to extend first my appreciation to the Oilman's for stepping up, and Caitlin for, and her group that have been putting the work in to get that choir and that stuff together. And they're participating and performing at different events around the community, and we're at the light up that night. So I just wanted to give them a props, to them to say, what a great job, and thanks to the community for giving us one more bit of activity for our kids in our community to do. 9-2, we've got a request from M.P. Zimmer, that he's home in the area for, because I'm assuming part of the Christmas holiday season, and they're, the house isn't sitting right now. And so he had written to us requesting a meeting in regards to, I think, kind of the Canada Infrastructure Fund, and I thought it was a real good opportunity this week to engage Bob and have a meeting with him, just so that we can, you know, to have some conversations about some of the components around that. So I just wanted to bring it forward to council. We've set that for Thursday for a meeting. What time is that meeting set for? Sorry, I didn't-
That's what I was just looking for.
I think it's in the morning.
That's what you're doing? You're doing that?
We are, council, right?
Counsel, yeah.
And that's on our calendar?
Not yet, because we, we'll bring it to this meeting to see if you-
And so it's for Thursday?
Yeah.
And we're doing, it's pretty short on this.
Well, we just got it just before Christmas.
Counselor Rogers?
Through your worship, did we get any information from staff regarding any kind of a wish list we have for Mr. Zimmer?
I think it's a little bit early yet, in terms of, we're going to go through the capital projects process through January and February, but I think this is an opportunity for us to engage with Bob and just understanding that infrastructure program that the federal government have, and just having that preliminary conversation. We engaged last fall, or last spring, when we had the sewer project, but when I went to Ottawa and met with them, but it just wasn't, it wasn't ready yet. But now, that, you know, two things. I think the, seems like there's more structure around that fund that we can hopefully access, and certainly with the election coming in 2015, that there's probably a better appetite for us to maybe leverage the opportunities, so.
So we'll do that through capital.
Okay. One of the, one of the things that I'd like to see on that wish list would be the upgrade of the water treatment plant. I think that's a critical component on what we're going to be needing to have to move forward, and it would also be another water storage facility for treated water, which should be, I believe, over on 17th, over for the Woodlands area, because I believe that'll be coming up soon.
Yeah, I would hope that that would be council's top of the list, but we'll see how that unfolds.
Yeah, we got that all strategic.
So we had the Dawson Creek Literacy Society in giving a-
You did say the time.
Oh, the time? We'll confirm it for you.
Okay.
Dawson Creek Literacy, we're in, in our delegation, and are going to have an event planned for June 27th. Jim, is there anything we need to do for that to?
Well, that depends on whether you're going to accommodate the requests. So basically, looking at it, there are a few things they're asking for. They're asking not just that you provide them barricades that their volunteers would set up, but they're asking that you would actually set up- set up, but they're asking that you would actually set up and remove the barricades. So that's on a Saturday, so it requires a couple guys in a pickup for Saturday to put barricades out and then take them down. They're asking for the water fill station. So we have a water fill station, and it's on a trailer, but it won't walk itself down there, so that's another truck and some other people to take it down. So those are kind of cost items for you. And they're also asking for a letter of support that they can use with their funding partners. So that's a no-cost item, but they're all things you would have to authorize by resolution.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schuman?
I would like to move that we provide the in-kind assistance for them with the things that Jim just mentioned. They also wanted the hand wash stations that we have as well, so I think this is going to be a really great event, and we should accommodate them.
Thank you. Seconded? Counselor McFadden, discussion? Counselor Jevakoff?
I'm just curious, they said they got approval to close the streets. Was that something that's been dealt with previously, or?
Through your worship, so several years ago, council decided that it wasn't productive use of council's time to deal with all these road closures. So you put a policy in place with a bunch of criteria that if a group meets it, they are, staff can okay the closure. So they have met the various requirements, insurance, canvassing the businesses, all that sort of thing. They've met the requirements, and so staff issued the closure permit.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed?
It's Carrie, thank you. The Rotary, and they come forward with a delegation this morning, and I don't know if, did we circulate the sponsorship?
Yes, it was part of the-
Part of, okay.
Basically, they did mention that maybe you'd be interested in sponsoring the meal package for all 600 delegates, but that's not in their package, and it's a number quite a bit larger than anything in the package.
I think he said it was like 100 grand.
The package has the premium or the platinum, which is the highest level sponsorship at 10,000, and then 5,000, 3,000, 1,000. So if council was going to sponsor, you would probably want to pick one of those existing categories rather than something so open-ended as paying for the meals for the delegates.
What's your pleasure? Counselor Jevakoff?
I'll move that we sponsor the platinum.
Moved by Counselor Jevakoff, we sponsor the platinum. Seconded by Counselor Wilbur, discussion? That's 10 grand.
That's like 10 grand.
Do we get some seats for that?
Four.
More seats? More. Discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed?
It's Carrie, thank you.
Your worship, can we propose 10 o'clock in the morning for that meeting on the 8th with Mr. Zimmer?
When am I going to get my cast off?
10?
Friday.
Curious date?
No, Cheryl can get her cast off.
Diary?
Nothing on the diary, your worship.
Consent, calendar, strategic priorities chart is done. Question and answer?
No one has signed up.
Immediate question, period? And now I'd like to recess to closed.
Oh.
Moved by Counselor Wilbur, seconded by Counselor Rogers. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Thank you, everybody.